It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, April 12th, 2021, to order at seven o'clock. The first thing we're going to do is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to public speak. First to speak is Shannon Loudon. Shannon?
Thank you for allowing me to speak first. I would like to publicly apologize for my inappropriate and disrespectful words that were unintentionally captured while Mr. Murray was speaking at last Wednesday's Board of Finance Budget Workshop. I never would have said those words publicly, and in case it wasn't obvious, I had no way of knowing that I was not muted when I said them, because I was on my phone in a car and not able to know that I was not muted. I have apologized to Chairman Brinker and now am apologizing to Selectman Murray. I have heard that there is a misunderstanding about my efforts to try to get the board clerk, Amanda Gibson, to delete my comment. That is not true. Knowing that the meeting was probably being recorded and might be publicly posted, I asked that Ms. Gibson look into bleeping my swears, because I was concerned that publicly broadcasting a video with obscenities might be an FCC violation and subject the town to fines. I took responsibility to Chairman Brinker and Ms. Gibson for my words, which if we were not in the time of Zoom, would not have been reflected in the meeting minutes. I have reflected quite a lot on what occurred and want everyone to know the following. I should have contacted Selectman Murray privately to express my upset about how he has publicly denigrated the Board of Education, and by extension, me as its chairwoman, for what he believes is how the Board of Ed has not done its job properly for six years, which is the time during which I have been the board chair. I have no issue with Selectman Murray's disagreeing with the Board of Education budget. My issue is with his consistent public attacks on our process and job performance, and including attacks on the superintendent, who has only been at her job for nine months. I have only one time in almost six years as an elected official ever publicly commented about any other Andover board or board member, and that was because I believed that selectmen were disrespectful to Superintendent Bruno. During at least three recent Board of Education public meetings, I have called for the public disrespect among Andover's three primary co-equal boards, the Boards of Selectmen, Finance, and Education, to stop the disrespectful public attacks, and it has not. And I certainly didn't aid in that endeavor last Wednesday, for which I am now apologizing. Finally, First Selectman McGuire informed me at about 5:30 this evening that he intends to entertain an agenda item to discuss me. So I am formally noting my objection to such on two grounds. Number one, 1.5 hours of notice is insufficient in case I wanted to have legal counsel attend the meeting. Whether or not it was to occur publicly or in executive session, 1.5 hours does not meet the legal criteria to discuss an individual and add an agenda item about that individual. Number two, the Board of Selectmen has absolutely no legal authority over me, and therefore has no jurisdiction whatsoever to discuss me. I clearly have no control over what is said in public comment, and I will listen respectfully to all that is said. But I respectfully suggest that specifically adding an agenda item to discuss another elected official over whom the Board of Selectmen has no legal authority is improper. I also finally want to note that I was solely speaking as a private citizen in my unintended utterance that occurred in public comment last Wednesday, and I clearly was not speaking in my capacity as Board of Ed Chair. I therefore have no reason to be discussed in that I was not acting in my legal or public elected official capacity. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I apologize to Selectman Murray for my words, and I look forward to hearing your comments during public comment only. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, next up, we have Elo Or Anson.
No, no, excuse me. Anson, you're up. Can you unmute yourself, Anson, or Amanda, do you need to unmute him?
Just unmute yourself, Loar.
Elo.
He's getting it.
You're almost there. It should be on the bottom left of your screen. I still can't hear you. Do you see on the bottom left?
Everybody was supposed to have three minutes. We're losing time. No, I'm teasing you. Come on. No. Anson, I will sit there and come back to you. When you figure it out, you let me know.
We'll come back to him.
Okay, let's go, Amanda.
All right, Kathy Pelosi and Mike Pelosi.
We're good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Diane Granier?
Nothing from my corner of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there's Eloar. I apologize. I did not know how to say your first name.
Can you hear me now?
There you are.
Okay. Sound is okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, just two issues I'd like to bring to the attention of Board of Selectmen. The number one issue is the open burning. And in a budget process, by imposing charges and penalizing the large landowners, that is somewhat a difficult situation. And if the local ordinance is so enacted, there should be a limit of some kind for large landowners, say 30, 40, 50 acres or so. Otherwise, it's a sort of a burden and creates further controversy. Second issue I have is the resident trooper. If it comes up in a discussion that resident trooper need in Andover, I mentioned that a few years ago, it's quite essential is the trooper's visibility in town. People driving by, they see trooper now and then, and they know that the state police is patrolling in town. It's very essential, and don't eliminate this in a budget. That's all I have to say, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Anson. We appreciate your comments.
Yep.
Thank you, Anson.
Okay.
Jerry Wright. Just unmute yourself, Jerry.
How's that?
There you are.
I know how to do it. I just got a mouthful of chicken. I really want to thank Scott Bissot for helping out with the Monument Park. He was kind enough to go down and out of his own pocket, lined it last week and fertilized it on Saturday. And of course, we had that heavy rain on Sunday. So I went down and watered the park, but I just wanted to share something with you. Scott, I told you I was running a one-inch hose that was three-quarter and a half-inch hose on a sprinkler. I ran for five hours. And I ran the three-quarter inch hose for four and a half hours. I never ran out of water. So just want to let you know, lost a little pressure, but watered the whole park and it steady was no problem. We're on the move with the brick sale. I think we, I'll check with Perle tomorrow, but probably picked at least 10 checks that came in today. And at least that many have gone online and have donated a brick. So that's moving right along pretty good. I did go to the transfer station on Saturday and passed out 94 brochures and six more at the Legion in the afternoon. And I'm going back to the transfer station again on Wednesday and Saturday. And then I'll be getting permission from Columbia to work theirs the following week. So we're right on board with it and looking forward to Ron Bissin getting started, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. Very exciting. Okay, next up, we have Jeff Murray.
No. Oh, Jeff, you're speaking publicly?
Yes, to honor Shannon's wishes, I'm going to do this during public speak. I'd like to issue a statement to everybody. Can everybody hear me? Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
I just want everybody to know regarding everything going on that I put a lot of thought in what I was going to say and how I was going to respond to what happened Wednesday night. I appreciate everyone's thoughts and support for what happened. I truly do. First off, I don't want this innocent, I do not want this incident to become political. Many times when they do, it reflects poorly on our town, and it undermines everything positive we are trying to accomplish, like the work at the Veterans Monument Park and the plans for the community center. The bickering editorials and articles in the River East against one another really needs to stop. And people really need to consider the damage done to the town when they engage in such behavior. It accomplishes nothing but to foster hate and division between all of us. In regard to what was said Wednesday night, I was probably just as shocked and stunned as everyone else who had heard it. It was derogatory, inflammatory, and it was completely out of line. Unfortunately, things said in a public forum are captured in recordings, and they are not easily retracted. Without exception, we must all take personal responsibility for our actions and what we say. I think everyone would agree, the proper thing that should have been done after this incident was for Shannon to immediately reach out to me with an apology for what was said. But unfortunately, that didn't occur. Instead, she decided to call the Town Hall, attempting to conceal or erase what she had said of issuing, instead of issuing a personal apology to me. Even though what she said on Wednesday night really bothered me, the attempt to censor or cover up what she said to me was even more insulting. That action set a clear message to me that she was not remorseful for her remarks and had no respect for me whatsoever. It made a bad situation much worse. As members of the town who hold elective office, we must all be careful to hold ourselves to a higher standard and respect each other and the public at large. However, the comments made Wednesday were vile and disgusting. It was very troubling that the Chair of the Andover Board of Education could not control herself and let her emotions run, which resulted in those hurtful words directed at me. Because of her comments and subsequent actions to conceal what she said, Shannon Loudon has lost my respect and the respect of many parents, board members, and residents of Andover. I feel you cannot be a respected leader anymore after the words and subsequent actions to censor what you said following this incident. What you did was inexcusable. You should have known better. I feel it would be in the best interest of the town if you voluntarily stepped down and resigned from your leadership position as the Chair from the Andover Board of Education. I'm asking you to please stop for a moment and consider putting both the Andover Elementary Schools and town's reputation before yours and spare the town's people any more subsequent negative press and embarrassment as a result of your recent actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up, we have Jerry Creme and Ann Creme.
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Wilson?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy. Catherine McGoldy Lewis?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Lattesca?
All set. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have phone number 860-798-3815. If you would like to speak, press star six. Oh, there you are.
Hi, this is Leanne Hutchinson. I guess no comment at this time. I guess I'll just make a really quick comment, having just said that, that I think this feature of having public speak at all, even though it didn't go well, to say the least, last week, at least gives people a chance to address each other and be heard by others. Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. Georgia Conrad? You're muted.
Okay. I guess I was very shocked to hear a professional person use that kind of language. I just think it's inexcusable. But if you think that way, and that's what you normally do, it's going to come out in the wrong place. So I hope this doesn't happen again.
Thanks, Georgia. Linda?
All set.
Linda Fish, is that you?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And then we have Nick Levine. He's from CBC. He's broadcasting for us, so we'll pass over him. Next is Kurt Dowling.
Thank you, Amanda. Just wanted to reiterate my email to First Selectman Jeff McGuire, copying the entire Board of Selectmen in regards to Chief Ron Mike's abatement. That's it.
Thank you. Diane Chikat?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dan Foran.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, we have Boris iPad.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Hubbard?
Can you hear me on this one today?
Yes, for now we can. Go ahead.
Going to be brief. I also would like to take time to reflect on what of course I was shocked. Comment publicly, I mean, that both parties, they needed to say tonight. I do want to comment on one thing that Ms. Loudon said, and that was how people might be attacking the process that the Board of Ed has undertaken. I mean, I'm present at all these meetings, and as you know, speaking up for what I believe in.
Joanne, we are having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry.
I will, I'll call in later. Try to.
Okay, and please, this goes to everyone. I just wanted to restate that if you'd like any of your comments included in public speak in the minutes, just email them over to me. I'm going to leave my email in the chat. Thanks, Joanne. Let me just make sure we didn't miss anyone. Dennis O'Brien, would you like to participate?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Okay, I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for participating.
Adrian would like to speak.
Yeah.
Public speak. Go ahead, Mr. Mandeville.
Yeah, you know, I have no problem honoring Shannon's wishes that we have comment outside the meeting. It is not the Board of Selectmen's purview to address this directly. It's by charter and by statute, this actually falls on the Board of Education. And I, you know, I think my issue with this as a citizen, but also someone who's on a board, speaking for myself, is that, you know, I was called out in the paper, you know, for just talking, you know, talking to someone, certainly not swearing at them. And I just find it ironic that then that person, you know, is, you know, seeking forgiveness for something that was so egregious. I can't even describe it. And I think that is the problem. Like, there's the hypocrisy of this is just deafening. But I have faith in the Board of Education as a whole, and hopefully, they can address it, as they're the only ones that can. So I don't believe this is the first time that this has happened with Ms. Loudon. You know, she's had an issue in the past with speaking, you know, even at her own board, at residents, and saying things that were inappropriate. So hopefully, this will get fixed. That's it.
Thanks, Adrian.
Okay, I'd like to say something too, please. I hope that whatever happens from here, I'm tired of the going back and forth in the newspaper, so I hope that this will stop. And just like Adrian, I'm confident that, you know, it's in the Board of Ed's hands and leaving it up to them to decide what they need to do. But I hope that from now on, we can be positive in the newspaper, because we don't need any more of this back and forth stuff. That's all I want to say.
Jerry, you can speak. Let's go. We'll keep going.
There we go. On a good note, I spoke to abstaining Connecticut today, and they told me that it looks like, depending on what the town does with the well and the power, that we're going to be a recipient for $7,500 grant. So towards the Monument Park. And that's the loan, irrigation, whatever it is. It all hinges on the meeting tonight. So please let me know if that's something that the town's going to fund. If not, I'll lose the grant or I'll get a reduction in the grant, okay? But it's there, and the town will move forward with it, and I'm good to go. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Scott, let's ask you. Do you want to say something?
Not said.
I agree with Scott. Well, no, I won't. I'll sit there and go. I did, Shannon did call me out for reaching out to her late in the day. I did try to call Shannon to sit there and talk to her, and I told her specifically the Board of Selectmen has no jurisdiction over the Board of Education, and that this was not a Board of Selectmen issue with the Board of Education or attempting to influence the Board of Education related to their membership. My issue is very simply the public discourse that is taken at meetings and how members of various boards deal with each other. And it's extremely important to me that we at least have a certain level of decorum that is kept at all meetings, and I hope as we move forward, we can all sit there and rise to a higher standard, let's say. And that is really what needs to occur. So since this will not be on the agenda, and all of the members of the Board of Selectmen have spoken during public speak, I would like to move on with our meeting and do things that need to get done for the town. Are we all ready? Everybody? We good? All right. Additions and deletions to the agenda. Members of the Board of Selectmen, what would you like to add to our agenda that is not here?
I would like to add, I'm not sure where it would be appropriate, but I'd like to discuss the reopening of the Town Hall.
Okay. Who wants to second that?
Seconded.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining members? Okay.
I'm having a hard time opening the board agenda. Do we have an executive session for union negotiations on there?
No, we do not.
I'd like to add that, please.
Anyone who want to second that?
I'll second.
All those in favor, let's talk about this one. So we really need to do this today, Adrian?
Yeah, I mean, Eric, Eric's looking to move forward with his discussions. So I did believe he called for that on Friday. I'm not sure if he did or not, but that was what he had relayed to me that he was going to do, so.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those that abstain? Anything else that we need to add to the agenda?
Yeah, I like I had 9F. Andover Rail Trail Bridge.
Okay. Those other, the other item that we added, Paula's, let's add that one as 9F. And Jeff will add yours as 9G. Okay, so that is.
Dennis has his hand up.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to suggest, if it's not on the agenda, and I didn't see it there, that we had an item to finally approve the notice and the date for the annual town budget meeting.
Dennis, that should be item 9A, Town Budget Discussion.
Oh. You're right. I stand corrected.
All right. Paula, can I ask you, your 9F is related to, just so I can type it in here?
Oh, reopening of the Town Hall.
Reopening Town Hall.
I thought Jeff had 9F.
No, Jeff has not G. So Jeff has Bridge, Bridge of Discussion, or Bridge Rail, Bridge Over the Rail Trail, or Rail Trail Bridge. The Andover Bridge. Let's just go Andover Bridge Discussion. Okay, anything else?
I have a question. So Kurt brought up the abatement. I don't know what the timing of that is, if we can put that tonight or next month. It's not, that's not on there, is it?
It is not on here, as intended.
Eric, is that a timing issue, or can we talk about that next month?
I don't know if there's any specific timing issue. The question is simply whether the Board of Selectmen wants to pursue that.
Paula, there is no timing issue with that. It's just something that needs to get into the works to happen.
Okay. Reason why I'm asking is, it looks like we've got a lot to talk about tonight, so if we push it off to next month, I didn't want to hold anything up, so.
That'll be fine.
Okay. Thanks, Kurt.
The burning that, while I was asking about, is that a ordinance that's passing through a board now, or is it something other?
Adrian, the Board of Selectmen, at a meeting, two meetings ago, approved a fee for the burning official to issue permits. Adrian, the Board of Selectmen, at a meeting, two meetings ago, approved a fee for the burning official to issue permits.
Yep. Oh, he's talking about the fee?
Yeah.
The fee is the. I thought he was talking about, because he said it as though it was a penalty for open burning.
He feels it's a penalty because we didn't charge before, and now we're charging, so that's unfair.
Ah, okay. Thank you for clarification.
Okay, are there any other items that need to be placed on the agenda? So we have three items, reopening Town Hall, Andover Bridge Discussion, and an executive session to discuss union negotiations. Right? I know the first one got approved. Did the second one get voted on, Amanda? I'm, I'm having trouble recalling a vote on that one. Yes? I think we voted on the.
The third one did not.
Not. So the Andover Bridge Discussion. So does someone want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. So I'll second that. All those in favor? Hi. All those opposed? All those who abstained? Adrian, are you going to vote anyway?
Um, yeah, I will vote in favor. Sorry.
That's okay. I had to run through all the options just to make sure.
I'm still trying to read the, the, the board agenda. I'm sorry, it's not opening correctly. I was trying it on my cell phone, so. So.
No. Mr. Anderson addressed everyone because, you know, he has 100 acres and he burns a lot. So, you know, it's not the same as a homeowner who has one acre burns once a year. He has 100, and he might burn a dozen times a year. So maybe we should.
Before we move on, do you want to add it to the agenda?
Well, I guess we could, because I think that there is an issue with it, kind of.
Okay, then, let's go. Nine G, nine H. Burning permits. Okay, does someone want to second that?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda? Hi. All those opposed? No. All those abstaining? No. Okay. So that would be nine H. Okay. Anything else? Anyone? Okay, board and commission presentations. Eric, I did not see anything in our packet. That accurate?
Yep, there are none.
Okay, so let's move on. We're going to move on to item five, appointments. I did not see anything there in our packet.
There are none.
Okay, item six, resignations. Six A, Tim Higley has resigned from Public Works.
Correct.
So Tim is taking retirement. We need to publicly thank Tim for his long service to the town. Appreciate all his hard work. I know Eric was down there last Friday, his last day. He was representing the town on our behalf, making sure that Tim, Tim enjoys his retirement, which he may not be retiring, but that's okay. Thank you. Item seven, the town administrator's report. Eric.
Okay, first, I'm going to go through this very briefly. We are, because you've all had this in your packet, we are spiking again a little bit in terms of total COVID cases within the town. As of today, we're running about an infection rate of about 25 per 100,000 per day. So it's, we're certainly down from our peak, but we're, you know, we're, we're definitely not down to zero. The change to the finance office, we, in my report, I said that the software is being installed this month. The software is now scheduled for install tomorrow, so we'll have admins on the server and starting the transition tomorrow with the intention of going live with it as our primary server when we go to the new fiscal year in July. The other thing I wanted to say in the, in the resident state trooper line, there was a bit of a social media uproar in the Lake region about a stalker or somebody abducting a child or something like that. You know, I discussed that today with the resident state trooper, you know. There was apparently a guy driving around the lake that did hit on several women in the lake. The troopers talked to him, but nothing, nothing really came out of that. So far, we're hoping to do interviews for the replacement for Tim Higley sometime next week. Right now, we've had 15 or 16 applicants, but we don't really have very many qualified applicants. So we haven't certainly closed that yet. But the interviewing, hopefully we'll, we'll get to interviewing next week and find a reasonable candidate.
Did we reach out to previous candidates, or did they reapply?
Yes, we did reach out to previous candidates, and some did reapply.
Okay, great.
So we have done a bunch of pothole filling in the last week. That seems to be a very frequent complaint the last month or so. And we are doing a lot of equipment maintenance. Many of you have seen, we're going around cleaning basins and waterways right now with the vacuum truck. I did get one complaint that they started too early in the morning and disturbed somebody. But, you know, that's life, I guess. And then the, the last thing that we as a board, or you all as a board, need to discuss at some point, I will be presenting. We, we've started looking at inspection services for a bridge on Merritt Valley and another small bridge on Lake Road. And we're looking at various different alternatives, and the question really is how much, we know we need to get them evaluated, and the question is how much to spend now, whether we spend the money for an evaluation and then essentially a both an evaluation and a recommended repair? Or do we just try to just do a, a straight state bridge inspection on those two? I hope to have more details for you next month. I'm still waiting on one of the three proposals to come back, you know, apples to apples with the others. Since the last meeting, we had our septic system install or inspected at the Town Hall and the fire station and everything state. So when we pick a surveyor for that, we'll be able to do as built. You know, for the community center, if that location ultimately is chosen. The other thing, when we left at the last meeting, we had decided we were going to definitively do a new well at the Veterans Monument. We've looked at that now with multiple well drillers, and both of them have indicated we can't drill where we wanted to drill because of the overhead power situation. And basically, we would have to disconnect the power to Scott Yeoman's house for four or five days while we did this. And he's indicated that he's none too excited about the prospect of us cutting his power to drill a new well. So if we end up drilling a new well, we'll end up having to drill it up on top above the plateau, not below where it drops off. We probably are going to want to drill it, do a couple test pits there before we do it, because we know there's a lot of ledge there, and what we don't know is whether we can fit a vault in. As an intermediate, we're going to take the existing well that's there, which we know has had sediment problems, but we don't really, really know how bad that is. I found the old well report from the mid 80s when that was drilled. So we're going to do basically a yield test on that well and then submit it for water quality data. One of the things that has come back, because I know the board has had indicated that they would be interested in a water fountain there. Apparently, the regulatory hurdles for outdoor water fountains are pretty significant. So if we're going to pursue that, you know, we're going to have to be prepared to spend some, some fairly significant money to make that happen, if that's really a board priority. So that's essentially what we're going to do. We're going to, we're pursuing two things. One, we're still getting quotes for what and where the well would be if we drilled the new one. And second, we're looking at the existing well and just making sure we rule that out before we go ahead and drill a third well, since, since that seems to be our other option. We, we're actually finally close to the final closeout of Times Farm Bridge. I know you've all heard that from me for two years, and you heard it from Joe before me. But this time, I think it's actually close. So sorry that's taken forever, but it looks like we've got the contractor on board, DOT on board, and our engineering rep, all kind of agreeing on what the final closeout will be. So that's good. We've resubmitted to drawings to the state DOT. They had finally issued us a letter back saying all the things we needed to resubmit before they would actually give us a letter saying that later they would maybe grant us an encroachment permit. So we're in the process of redoing that. And the last thing is, I've spent a bunch of time trying to figure out what we're going to do regarding townwide alarm and monitoring. Some of that information is in your packet. And what I really wanted to question from the board on that is, how do you want to proceed? Because it's a little clear, unclear. My suggestion is I give everything to CAP along with a recommendation, and you let CAP make the decision, and then it goes to Board of Finance to approve the funds. But if you wanted to do those two and then come back to the Board of Selectmen for final approval, I'm happy to do that. So I just need to know what you guys, where you guys are going with in terms of that. And that's basically it. I threw some pictures in there at the end of the report. You'll notice one was the picture from the early 60s installing the culvert by, or on Lake Road by Basola. And one of the guys standing in the culvert doing the work is the first selectman, interestingly enough. So not this first selectman, but the first selectman of the time. So I thought that was an interesting historical look. And the other thing I think we probably ought to do is, in one of the windstorms, the shed roof over the recycling area at the transfer station got torn off. It was a Boy Scout project, you know, 15 years ago that wasn't done particularly well. So I'm trying to get a couple estimates on what it will cost to repair that. And that's everything I have unless you have questions for me.
Eric, do we currently, do we currently have, I know we talked about a while back, I don't remember seeing who we had picked, but do we have somebody for carpentry for small repairs that we could just kick that over to, because it didn't seem like that would be a very expensive fix?
No, I don't think it's going to be a very expensive fix, and, and I am using one of the local Andover residents that's a town carpenter to take a look at that.
Can we also, while we're at it, since we're going into the rainy season, can we realign the gutters at the Town Hall? They just need to, the practice need to be adjusted so that they.
That is, that was supposed to have been done already. That is in the works.
Okay, same con, same contractor, or?
Same contractor.
Okay, all right.
Eric, the, the roof over the recycling area, is that something that the town crew can do?
Theoretically, sure. They're more than capable to do it, but right now, we have more work than they can practically do. And that's not in their kind of sweet spot.
Yeah, they're not, they're not going to have the correct tools either. I mean, it's a great idea, but, you know, it'll go much quicker if somebody has the correct tools and could just bang it out, you know? I mean, that's a really quick fix, so.
Eric, the truck has arrived?
The truck has arrived. It's been in service for a while. I put a picture in there, too. We put the logos on the truck, so it looks pretty good. We've been out using that truck doing patching.
Okay. And I will speak for Ms. Grignier. The repair or the installation of that bridge will not fly now since they dammed up all the water and stopped everything. So I blew that up because I was extremely interested to see what, what they were doing. It was a very interesting install picture. Is that in the, is that in the museum, or is that in the Town Hall?
That is in the Andover Museum.
There you go. Okay. Okay, and then.
About the bridge inspections, doesn't the state do that? Eric, why are we reaching out to private companies to inspect our bridges?
The last time the bridge, the small bridge, so there's two categories of bridges, 20 feet and over, 20 feet and under. The last time our bridges that are 20 feet and under were inspected by the state was 1991. So, you know, they get around to it every 40 years or so. And we know those both have some fairly significant issues. And basically what's happened is our town engineer has said he doesn't have enough, he doesn't have enough insurance coverage to be willing to give us a PE opinion on both of those bridges. So we're kind of stuck with using a company that does, you know, that's insured for and does bridge inspections on a regular basis. So we've actually talked to and walked it with three companies. You know, and, and got a couple different, you know, all, all three actually gave us reasonable proposals. The problem is they're not really apples to apples comparisons. And so what I did is I reached out to one of the contractors and asked them, well, I reached out to two contractors, and both tried to get more information from both of them. So I had more even comparisons before, between the three. And I sat down with Brandon Handfield, acting as our town engineer, and reviewed all of the data with him. So I, he's kind of, his, he would feel most comfortable based on talking to all of them, going with Cardinal Engineering. But I feel like I, I want to get a full picture before I, I recommend any kind of decision to the board. I mean, the other real problem is I don't necessarily want to spend a ton of money on inspection if we can't afford to fix it.
Before, before you do that, can you explain to the board what, what the value of this is? Is this inspection going to assist us to get state funding? Is this inspection going to do something other than tell us we have a problem bridge? What's it going to do?
Yeah, so what Cardinal is, Cardinal is proposing two things. Two bridges, two different approaches. The, the first bridge is the one on Merritt Valley Road. And there's, there's two questions. It's an old stone, you know, a 100-plus-year-old stone bridge, and the two end walls, the parapets, are both suspect. So the first, for that bridge, what, what would probably end up happening is they would do a state bridge and state, you know, certified bridge inspection on that bridge, and then a, and do the, get you up through the design phase so that you could apply to the state for matching funds to do that bridge. The problem is, is that the state still only gives you 50%, and that could be a fairly expensive fix. A lot cheaper than replacing the bridge completely, but probably not inexpensive. And it's hard to know exactly how much that would be, you know, until we get, until we got through an actual inspection and, and got a set of. But in other words, that would give us enough data to go to apply to the state for funding. The other bridge, you really didn't feel like the damage to the bridge warranted either A, a full-blown inspection, or B, going to the state for funding, because there, there's a lot of things attached to, and a lot more difficulty added when you apply to the state for funding. He thinks that one, he can give you, give us basically a less detailed inspection and then a, and then basically a repair method. And then basically a repair methodology that we can either do ourselves or farm out. So two different bridges, two different approaches based on the severity of the bridges right now. The concern with Merritt is the the parapet walls aren't really structurally attached. I mean visually, if you look at them, some lean in and some lean out and you can see fairly extensive cracks. And the issue is if somebody hits them, they'll probably go through the parapet wall and end up in the river below, which it would be an issue. So that that's really what, what their recommendation is, which I think is probably lines up with what we need the best.
Where's the location of the other bridge?
The other one is right up the street. If you take a left onto Lake Road from Merritt. And you go straight up about a quarter of a mile, a third of a mile, that bridge right there.
And do you have state ratings on these bridges from previous inspections?
From forty years ago.
So that's the last time the states looked at those bridges?
Well, not forty years ago, nineteen ninety-one, so thirty years ago. Yeah, that's the last time any of these have been inspected. Yep.
Do they have intention of doing it again soon? Have you inquired?
No, they typically do not inspect anything under. Under twenty feet, although apparently randomly they do it in some cases. Why in nineteen ninety-one they decided to inspect all the small bridges in the state, I don't know, but they did at that point and they haven't since.
They were probably having problems with the railroad bridges. They just got on with it, so. Alright, anything else for Eric? Anybody? Okay, let's go into item eight, old business. First item on the. This agenda line is alarm monitoring for town buildings. Do you want to talk about it, Eric? I mean, many more than you talked about it?
So the only real question I have is. Where do you want the Board of Selectmen to be in the decision making process? Do you want the CIP to make the recommendation and the Board of Finance to approve the funding? Or do you, what, where do you want to fit in the, in the puzzle?
Be really honest, your quotes were all over the board. I mean, what is the? You know, even if you went with the low bidder, it looked like the low bidder didn't even say anything about equipment installation. It just talked about monitoring services.
So. First of all, you have incomplete information. It was actually my intention to only give you the summary. And to give it to you after I'd given it to CIP and use CIP to look at it. I didn't realize Amanda had put all of that in the packet. So I can either give you a lot more information and you can wait a month or you can get to it after CIP. Your call.
Well, make us the final, final stop for this. So put it on next month's agenda if you need to.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions related to the alarm monitoring?
I would, I would just suggest that maybe CIP rank them in the order of preference.
Okay.
Okay, eight B Chamberlain Pond cleanup. Eric?
I wasn't the one who wanted the, Jeff, can you address that?
Yeah, it's getting discussed tomorrow night at the Wellens meeting, so.
Okay.
There's no ice now, so we can't clean it up anyway, so we'll have to wait till next year.
Eight, C, library mural vandalism restitution update. I see there's, there's dates for all of the three participants. And this will be on our agenda next month, I assume. Okay. Eight D, Community Senior Center Building Committee update.
I don't have anything other than what I relate in my report.
Jeff or Scott or Adrian, do any of you have anything you want to talk about related to it? Okay.
Nope.
Alright, nine, new business. Nine A, Town Budget Discussion.
Okay, so I sent to you late. A revised resolution that the town's attorney had asked me to pass off to you. To, because although you've motioned that there be a budget meeting on. May sixth, you haven't actually made a resolution. And given the changes in the governor's executive orders, this should comply with the rules. That are in place as of today for holding a budget meeting.
Does someone want to make that motion? Okay, let's find the motion.
Would you like me to read it? Or I can share my screen?
Hold on.
That was your late email, Eric?
Yep, correct.
I'll make the motion then, hang on.
I don't see it in there, Adrian. That's why I was hesitating. Eric, I would recommend you read it.
Okay, Annual Town Budget Meeting Resolution, resolved, comma. That the annual town budget meeting for the town of Andover be held at the Andover Elementary School and the Gymnasium. Thirty-five School Road on Thursday, May sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. Said meeting to be held in person with face masks required for all attendees. In addition to six feet of social distancing per per person, except for those living together in a residential unit. As more fully set forth in the proposed Town of Andover Notice. Of twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two annual budget meeting prepared. And submitted by the Town Clerk of the Town of Andover and approved by the town's attorney. So moved by Selectmen blank dated at Andover, Connecticut, this blank day of blank twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I will make a motion to. Put forth what Eric has just read to us. So Amanda, my motion will be that the text of that reading. Anyone want a second bet?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that meeting motion? All those in favor? We're gonna move on to the next item.
Eric, does the Board of Selectmen have to sign that resolution?
Yes.
Uh, I don't think you necess- as written, you don't all have to sign it. Dennis, do you have a?
Well, Carol would like you to come in and sign it. I mean, I, it may not be necessary. It's gotta be published. It's got to be sent out to. You know, under the charter, it's gotta be sent out to everybody and I think she'd like to have your, all of your signatures on it. And I think it's a good practice and whether or not it's legally necessary, I'm not sure. But, you know, one signature would probably do it that of, at least that of the first selectman. But I think, I would recommend that you all sign it if you can. I think she'd like you to come into the. The office and 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 do it when you can sometime this week.
Hopefully we'll all get in there. I will make sure that I get in there and sign that once Carol has it ready. Nine B, COVID Funding Update. Eric, you provided the state numbers to us.
I provided the numbers we got from the state. I got an update from. From Martin Heft, who's one of the under secretaries of the state. But it really didn't have any additional details that we didn't already know. So there still has not been any real guidance on. On what their actual expectations are. It's it's kind of up. It's very ambiguous what they're asking for. I know both CCM. And Cost Council of Small Towns have formally requested. From the state and federal government that they provide more details about what that money can actually be spent on. As soon as I have more details, I'll give them to you. I'd hope to have more by today than I do, but I don't.
Alright, nine C, Updates to Veterans Monument Park. So we talked about this with Jerry's public speak. Scott, thank you very much for contributing and doing all that work for the the monument park. It's appreciated.
You're welcome. Um, what about the other well, Eric, the one that you and I tested? Is there anything that anybody can do with that well? I thought that you and I checked it and it was a good well.
I mean, the water quality seemed okay, but I mean, it's a shallow well and and we ran it dry easily. It's in the groundwater. Is it gonna be sufficient? I don't know. I, I'm not a well guy. I I can't evaluate the quality of that.
That well was was running dry was the issue, exactly. So it couldn't, it couldn't sustain draw, you know?
I don't think that that was the issue ever, other than when me and Eric were down there, Adrian. I think that the. Pressure switch went bad on a number of occasions because of its location underground.
But it was, it was literally running dry was my understanding from the previous grounds committee. You know, that was, that was doing a lot of the work. They they had issues with it, with it running out.
I I mean, when we, when we measured the flow rate of that, we got somewhere around. Last fall, we got somewhere around two or two and a half gallons per minute, what the draw rate on that was. So if you're planning on putting sprinklers in, that equates to one to two heads. And I don't think that's really sufficient to be running. You know, that if you really think you need thirty to sixty heads in there, you know, that means you're gonna have to have twenty zones or twenty-five zones. And to me, that just doesn't seem practical.
I thought, I thought we checked it, Eric. It was, was five or ten gallons a minute.
I mean, it will, it will flow five gallons a minute from the pump. But then what does it run? You know, it runs six minutes and then it runs dry. You know, and you wait fifteen minutes and then, you know, when when you measure what the rate is at which you can. Not what the pump is capable of, but what you can get every minute without, you know, running the water table down. We ended up with around two and a half gallons a minute. Now, that's seasonal because it's a, it's a shallow groundwater well. So I'm sure at some times of the year, the performance is much better. But, you know, when do you need the water? You need the water when it's not raining very much.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, Eric, um, I hadn't seen it yet. Can you still get me a copy of the, of the? The plans for the. Sprinklers? We had a, we had an estimate from Ron, didn't we, on that?
Yeah, I think, I know I've seen a hand drawn sketch of of what he was planning on doing. I'm not absolutely sure I have a copy, but I'll see.
Well, what exactly did you need, Adrian?
Well, I mean, we should have had, we got three bids on that, didn't we? Because that, I mean, that's one of the things we're paying for. I mean, I know on items that that Ron was donating, you know, we were, we were not doing that, but. If we're, if we're paying for items, we still have a town policy to follow that we're getting three bids, so. You know, let's see what's on that bid and 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 I thought we had also gotten one from our current. Person that was currently servicing our, our, our current stuff.
No.
That we need to, we need to get three bids total.
Are we providing sprinklers? Because we weren't talking about providing sprinklers. We're talking about providing a well. We're talking about providing all the electrical work.
Well, then we need some clarification because my understanding was, you know, that's. If that's coming out of the funds that are being donated to the town, it's still the town writing the check out of that account. We still have to follow the same policy.
No, no. Ron and Jerry are taking care of that part of it.
Well.
We're responsible for the well.
Okay, ju- just to be clear, my understanding is that the town, the town is cashing checks or putting them in an account. Because that, that's town property down there. I know this is Jerry's baby, but it's still town property, right? It's state property that the town is managing, right? Correct? So.
Town property now.
Okay, town property now. So we're still, we're still writing checks from the town to this stuff because the money is coming. To the town in the name of the monument under this fund. So we still have to follow the same procedures. We can't just. You know, if, if, I know, dude, I know Ron was donating some things and that's fine, but beyond that, we still have to cover our butt.
Paula.
This is exactly what we talked about, you know?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the notes.
Wasn't, wasn't Ron and Jerry responsible for the irrigation?
Yeah, there, but I, I understand what Adrian's saying. He's saying, he still wants to go this, go through the same process. Because no matter who's giving the money, if we're writing it out of the town account. He's, he just wants to cover our bases and go through the same process. So he's just. Adrian, are you saying you just want two more bids just to cover it? But we're still.
Absolutely. I mean, listen, it, a- again.
Alright, we'll sit there and get the bids. Eric, let's sit there and get the bids. So.
Anything that the town is gonna end up writing the check for out of that account. If it's money that Jerry has raised separately or money that has come into Jerry directly, then it doesn't matter.
I think it was separate money that he, he said that he had before the brick thing came up.
Okay, but if it's coming out of the brick thing, then we've got, we have to have the bids.
Isn't that the way you understood it, Paula?
Yes.
Well, let's just cover our butts just in case and if it comes out of the. If it, if it not coming out of the brick money, then it doesn't matter and Jerry can choose whatever contractor he so chooses. But if it's coming out of the brick money, then we have to at least have bids.
I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's coming of, of the brick money.
Okay, well.
Okay.
Is Jerry, is Jerry still on the call? Can we ask him?
He is not, but we will, we will sit there and and get that done. It's not going to. It's not going to impact us other than some more work for Eric. Sorry, Eric. I'll blame that on Adrian.
You can blame it on me, but I I did ask for this. I asked for this proposal twice now. At a pre, our previous meeting and then also at the walkthrough, so. This is.
What are you looking for? Because I'll, I'll find out. You want.
We had Ron's proposal on the table. I thought we had a previous one as well, but if we don't, then we still need two more.
So you want a drawing of how, what, what the.
Had a proposal on the table for, I I think he said sixty heads or whatever. Let's, we still need to see what that number is and what the proposal is. If there's a drawing included, great. If there's not, that's fine too, whatever.
And then in addition, you're asking for two more, two more companies.
Correct. If we're gonna write a, a check from the town to anyone. Then our policy has always been from Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, everybody, we get three bids. We're doing it for the, for the alarm system. We're doing it for the well. We're doing it for electrical.
But once again, you know, we're starting with not really even knowing. We're starting with a generic concept, sprinklers in an area, you know, and we're expected to get bids. Have we defined what full area we're sprinklering? Have we defined what flow rate?
Ron was down there, Ron said that it went from. It went from the bottom of the stairs all the way down to where the, where the electrical box was.
But my point is that if, if you're going to go out and solicit proposals. The very first thing we should do is we should, we should decide on what criteria we want. You know, i- and unfortunately, I I know nothing about sprinkler systems, other than water comes out of them. And, you know, you waste a lot of water and the grass gets greener.
That's why, so do you remember how you, we had the same issue with the, with the alarm system, right?
Right.
Right, so.
Now we have a total mess where we have completely different quotes. And I've spent weeks trying to get the contractors to give me somewhat similar quotes.
Right.
And I still can't evaluate them. And I still can't evaluate them. And you know, none of us even know whether these systems are gonna pass inspection. You know, with the fire marshal until they submit actual designs, which they won't do unless they have the the contract.
Well, part of the contract, I mean, that's pretty simple that you put it in the contract that it has to pass the fire marshal approval. I mean, that's, you know, and that's standard procedure. I, you know, I don't pay for a bathroom unless the plumber passes inspection, you know? It is what it is. So I guess my point is that. I understand it's a pain, but that's part of contracting sometimes is that, you know, you have to. Because there's different technologies out there and there's different methodologies for doing things, you have to weigh one against the other. Welcome to my day every day.
Clearly, you don't want to use design professional to do the design. You want each contractor to give you an independent proposal.
Because the divine.
With what you get.
Because the design professional that you were picking, Eric, if we're gonna pick an argument about this, was no longer in the industry on a day to day basis. And was only looking at one methodology for doing it. And now you figured out that there was absolutely more than one methodology, isn't there?
Okay, this this is an item that we're going to move on from because we're gonna try to get this done. And. Paula, we'll get with Jerry. We'll figure out Jerry's situation. Scott. Let's sit there and get with Ron Beeson, trying to figure out what we can do for a sprinkler system. And let's bring in some sprinkler manufacturers or some.
Ron said he already put something out there, so.
Ron has a design, a layout. We'll sit there and get it from Ron and then we'll try to sit there and take that to some other installers and see what the pricing would be. Is anybody objectionable to getting three different quotes?
No, someone's gonna have to initially lay the whole thing out and come up with a map and a design. Ron did it twice already. I doubt that you're gonna convince him to do it again or something that he's gonna.
I, yeah, that's all I think Adrian is asking for. Where is the drawing?
Okay, I will call I will call Jerry tomorrow. I will have a conversation with him. I will ask him and and make sure we understand. Whether the money is coming from the bricks or what. And I will ask him if Ron provided these drawings or proposal. And I will ask him to send it to us again. So I will.
I will. He did not. I think he he probably gave us a proposal, but no drawing.
Well, a proposal was fine. I don't know that we needed drawing because it may get laid out differently on the day they go out there and do it. It depends on. Are there any other obstacles? Where do we end up laying out our stuff? I mean, all those things play into it, so.
Eric, could I ask you a question? When we when we left that meeting, what was the town responsible for when we left that meeting?
The well, the electrical, the vault. That's it.
Yes, but the problem is Scott is that when Jerry says responsible for. He's in my understanding is those checks from the brick pavers are being sent to the town to deposit. Into an account that is then. Sent on this. So those checks are being written from that account, right? But there there it's a town account.
All right, let's let's get past this.
I will I will have a conversation with Jerry and I will ask him. The money that he raised, what is that covering for the project? I'll take notes and I will share it with everyone and I'll ask him also. About Ron's proposal and I will get that to everyone, okay? And then from there, we can look into two other companies, okay?
Paula, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Paula.
Day parade plans. Eric, are there?
As far as I know, so I talked to Amy Knox today, who was on the committee, and I reached out to John McCall. Who I haven't gotten back. My understanding is they're planning on doing a car parade similar to last year. Because we're probably not likely to be able to get any bands or any of the things to do a traditional parade. So that is the basic plan that they're going for. I need to get to John McCall because I need to figure out what I need to get in terms of whether we need more flags or what we need for the event.
Yeah, the last I heard, I was on an email about a month ago. And John emailed the committee and included me. And I told him I would help as best as I can and and, you know, have him. Talk to Eric about what we need to do for flags, but he was planning on doing the car parade, so.
All right, and nine E, Building and Land Use Department.
Okay, Administrative Assistant, I assume will deal with that in Executive Session as you've asked. I put information in your packet about the online permitting system. It is not the final contract. Dennis O'Brien has reviewed it. He's given me a number of suggestions. And I've gone back to the contractor and asked them to incorporate those suggestions. It's not a very lucrative contract on their part. So I'm not sure how much they're gonna be willing to go back to their town's attorney or their attorney and actually modify it. But we'll see. And we'll go from there. It's been. It's gone through both CIP and Board of Finance. At this point.
Just so everybody understands, the charge for the online permitting system is ten dollars per permit.
Basically, yes.
Okay.
There are a couple of different possibilities we ways we can collect. I suggested that since the town wouldn't want to pay for it. The way we would actually do it was just simply charge every applicant and pass the cost straight on through to the people applying for the permits.
And then I suggested that we. Put it out there in a Facebook post. We're not gonna reach everyone. But to put it out there somehow, so people are updated and they know that they can go to the website to do that.
But it's, we're still a few months away from implementing that. But still, they've got to create all the pages and there's a lot of background stuff. And we don't even have a contract with them yet, so it'll be a while before. But, you know, we will notify the public that that's in place and we'll change our website to accommodate that.
Eric, do we? We have an older computer that could just do basic web access for this. So that we could always set something up. If a resident comes in, then finds out that they're supposed to do this online. Is there something we can set up so we have a station downstairs for them to be able to do this right there in the town hall if they needed to?
I think we will probably end up having to put one in. Because you're right, there's a certain fraction of the population doesn't own a computer or a phone. And will not have the ability to do that.
Yeah, just it would make sense to have a station in town hall they can use, you know?
Yep. Concur.
Okay, driveway bonds.
So you have some information in your packet from a company called The Driveway Guys. Who have asked that we consider allowing them to put in a permanent performance bond. Instead of paying individual five hundred dollar bonds. For the driveway as a convenience to them. My personal opinion would be no, simply because they're a pretty horrendous contractor to deal with in general. And, you know, half the time they don't pull permits anyway for the driveways they work until we catch them. So I don't necessarily feel like doing anything to make life their lives easier. But maybe that's not an appropriate attitude either.
The state requires a ten thousand dollar bond for ingress and egress onto their roadways.
It does, yep. A ten thousand dollar bond only costs, I think in general, the last time I did, the last one I did was one fifty, so.
You know, somewhere it's less than two hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's like one fifty a year.
So is there something we need to do to increase the driveway bonds or to make it?
So right now, what we require is we require every single time you do a driveway apron onto the town road. You pay a five hundred dollar cash bond to us. We take your money and we keep it. And when we're satisfied that it's done correctly. We release the bond and give you your money back. That's what we do now. There's two problems with that. What if they really screw something up? Five hundred dollars isn't really enough.
Nothing.
To correct a major damage. You know, on the other hand, so requiring companies to post a much larger bond. You know, is advantageous. On the other hand, then if they screw something up and you gotta go through the bond company. My guess is it would take you quite a while to actually get money out of them. Whereas if you've got a cash bond, you just don't give them their bond back. So there's advantages and disadvantages both ways.
Yeah, the the other issue is if they didn't pull a permit, then you have to prove that they did the work.
Adrian, in in a bond situation, what's the difficulty? I mean.
Three to six months and the bond company has the option of picking their own contractor to do the repairs, so. You know, it's not. It the biggest thing is, you know, proving that the work was done incorrectly. And, you know, proving, you know, it wasn't their guy, was the work done incorrectly? And then after that, it's it's not too bad. It's just, you know, they drag it out a little bit. But three to six months, I think, is on average, so.
And then.
I don't have a problem with a bond with them only in the sense that at this point. At this point, we don't have any, if they're only coming in and pulling permits when we catch them. We would be better off having the performance bond.
Right, exactly.
Right, have a ten thousand dollar performance bond, which is what the state requires and what we should require. For for commercial applications, you know, for commercial companies.
They wanna make it available to you, Eric, then you should take take it from them.
Yeah.
A problem with them?
Right, and then. Whether they pulled a permit or not. If a resident, if we go buy a driveway that's freshly done, we have a problem with it. The resident says driveway guys did it. Then we go to them and say, hey, now we've got it. The bond's already on file, you know?
Right.
It may be a better option for us, because one of the ways they do their their work is they they go to a town, let's say they come and they do my driveway. They send their guys around to all the driveways, say, on Boston Hill Road and go, hey, you want your driveway done? We're already here. You want your driveway done? We're already here. Because the biggest expense in paving is moving the equipment from A to B every time you gotta do the work, right? After that, it's payroll. So if they're already in the area to be able to bang out a bunch of driveways. It 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 it's a great working model. It's it's hard for a town, though, because they're not gonna wait two or three days. They're already there. They're doing the driveway the next day. They don't care. That's the issue, you know? So.
Okay, so Eric, can you sit there and come back the next meeting and tell us exactly what you want to do with the driveway guys?
Make them post a ten thousand dollar cash bond. And every time they do something without a permit, charge them five hundred bucks. That's my approach.
Well, you can't do the second part, but you can do the first part. The the second part, you'd actually have to have an ordinance on file or something that applies.
What would their permit be for the driveway?
Five hundred.
No, I know that's a, is that the permit fee?
No, I'm. So we, the only thing we permit is the apron. I mean, as Board of Selectment's concerned, the only issue is where your driveway meets a town road. Does your driveway drain onto the town road and cause a problem? Or do you do a really bad apron and it ends up screwing up our road? Those are the only two things we, so I think it's a sixty dollar, we charge a sixty dollar fee. But we hold a five hundred dollar cash bond for each one.
But the bond, the bond is for performance and if they don't do it correctly, we're supposed to use that to fix it. Okay, that that's that's the ten thousand dollar bond. What I'm sitting there saying. If they move from driveway to driveway and are just doing other driveways. Because of what Adrian said, it's more advantageous to do multiple driveways, which makes common sense. They're not pulling a permit out to do that driveway. They're just doing it.
Correct. That's their normal modus operandi. Ignore the town.
Ignore the town.
Every once in a while, they'll pull a permit. Ahead of time, but mostly they just do it and if they get caught, they deal with it and pay their fee in the bond.
Okay, so that's what I would sit there and recommend to you, Erica. Yes, have a bond for them. And if we find that they don't sit there and pull the appropriate permit. We should pass an ordinance, get the Attorney O'Brien to work with us to to put put an ordinance in place. To collect more money than the permit that they failed to pull, so hopefully they just pull the permits correctly.
Four times the permit amount.
How about five?
Five times the permit amount.
No.
Let's see what Attorney Brian finds is reasonable and legal.
Okay, all right. So the next meeting, we'll sit there and address this and and we'll put that on our old business list. Okay, on nine F.
So you don't want me to do anything at this point? You want Attorney O'Brien to come back to you with the proposed ordinance? Is that what you're asking?
I I would tell you, and if you need us to make a motion, I would tell you to get the bond from them.
I'll make a motion that we we take a ten thousand dollar performance bond from driveway guys per their recommendation. And. Refer refer. An ordinance to Attorney Brian to craft to address. Driveway driveway bonds in general and this.
Driveway permits.
Yeah, driveway permits.
Permits and, yeah, and bonds, right. I second that, Adrian.
All right, further discussion on that issue? All those in favor? Jeff Murray, you good?
Hi.
Okay, five, no. Let's move on to a nine F reopening town hall. Paula?
I just wanted to start the conversation about maybe getting a proposed date and get some thoughts from everybody and Eric. About when we think we're gonna reopen the town hall. I just wanted to start the conversation tonight.
Eric, how is?
Are we gonna reopen the town hall?
Yes.
Eric, how is vaccination proceeding within the town hall employees?
Uh, mixed.
Mixed?
You know, yeah, town hall employees are like everybody else. Some people are willing to get vaccinated. Some people aren't. So we're gonna have a mix.
So I I was. In your information, you informed us that one employee has COVID and one employee is out on leave from a close contact?
Correct, at the moment.
The moment. So Paula, I I would guess from my end, I would sit there and say we probably need to put it on next month's agenda. And hope that we get more vaccinations issues. And I agree with you, we probably need to. Set a date for opening the town hall.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see, I'd be curious to see if Eric can find out. From, you know, I'm hearing that other towns are open. And I just wanted to see if he had any any discussions with other town managers about. Why they felt they opened and and what their plan was and I'm and also maybe get some info from Highland Health District. So just wanted to get the conversation started and I know. We want to do this safely. I understand that, but I think it's time to start having the conversation and see what we can do.
Something we don't?
Say again?
You know something we don't? Is there something big coming down the pipe?
No, I I don't have a crystal ball, my friend.
Erica, is Bolton up open?
Uh, I don't know. I don't think they they were like never open from the public.
Paul, do you know who's open?
I'm hearing, so I have not personally looked into it, but I'm hearing from people in town that I keep getting questions like, when are we gonna open? When are we open? And contractors are saying that Coventry is open, so I have not looked into that. And I believe Hebron is open.
Lebanon is open also.
Is there anyone that you're getting complaints that they're not receiving the services that they require?
I don't think that they're not receiving the services. They're just, you know, curious and say, why do I, you know, why are we doing this differently? Or or I, and, you know, I talked to Eric about this and he brought up a good point. If we open up. It that doesn't mean that when they come in, somebody isn't gonna be in that department to help them, you know? So we just conversations to start having about this. Eric, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things and and I do think it's a good topic of discussion. This will be one of the major discussion topics for Thursday at the Eastern Highlands Health District Board of Directors meeting. All the administrators want to talk through what our plans are for reopening. Um, all the administrators wanna talk through what our plans are for reopening. Um, we haven't really had that group conversation in a while. Um, we're hoping to at this meeting, and I'd like to get some more feedback from Rob Miller and the Health Department. Because I don't, you know, I don't wanna be the lone wolf doing something different than what everybody else is doing. Um, the the other thing, I think, and and this is really kind of a board decision. Well, ultimately, if we're being honest, it's Jeff's decision, because we're still operating under a public health emergency. Therefore, technically, it's his decision, but I presume he as well as I would take all of your uh opinions and and honor them. But the the first big question is, how concerned are we about liability? Um, and the reason I ask that is we technically are liable for employees that get sick on at work. Like any other OSHA complaint, and I know several people have mentioned to me, can't we just make them sign a waiver? And the answer is no. I mean, you can't have a public works employee sign a waiver saying they can use a chainsaw with flip flops either. You know, you can't waiver away your, you know, your health. So the the question is just how much risk tolerance do we as a town want to take? Um, and the question is, what do we do about employees that have no intention of getting vaccinated? Um, and then do we differentiate between employees that don't wanna get vaccinated? Um, because they have a medical exemption versus a religious exemption, or they just don't want to. Or, you know, where are we going with that? Uh, I mean, I, as I put out originally. What I would think is the appropriate, and and let me be very clear, if you chose. We could require employees to get vaccinated. We are unlikely to make that choice, but we legally can do that, and I'm not saying I recommend that. I'm just saying that that's a legal option for you if you so choose.
So Eric, can you give us an update after Thursday's meeting?
Sure.
To what the information is coming back from the Health Department so that we can make an informed decision? Because I would tell you, Paula, it's probably between this meeting and the next meeting that we really might have an opportunity. To sit there and open back up as as they open up the uh vaccination age groups. So. Let's sit there and and get some information, because right now, you know, being in the office with Eric this morning, I was more. I'm looking at it going, if 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 we're missing services, that's one thing. You know, if we're missing something, Paula, I would say absolutely, let's open it up, because something is not getting accomplished. But if we're not getting complaints, and if Erica is not getting complaints, that something uh is not getting done. Then then let's be safe and and.
So here, here's my, here's my final question. So right now, people can come to the door. They ring the bell and they come in. Is that how that's working?
Correct, somebody gets at the door. If it's something they need to come into the building to get, they sign in. So we can do contact tracing and then, you know, they go to whatever department they need to go. And if it's something like a dump sticker, where they can be dealt with strictly outside, whoever's dealing with them just goes outside and transacts it that way.
So I guess what's the difference between them ringing the doorbell now and going in? Then us saying, okay, now the town hall's open. Is it just a matter of? Right now, you know who's coming to the door before they come in? I'm just trying to understand what the difference is.
Well, because you know who's in the building at any one time. You know, and ideally, you know, if six people all want the town clerk at one time, you're not gonna put six people in the town clerk's office. Because you can't make the minimum six foot separation distance. So by doing that, you can regulate traffic flow.
You know, for clarity, it looks like Hebron opened up on the fifth, but they're still requiring sign in. They're requiring a temperature check and, you know, they're actually still pushing people to do electronic or Dropbox servicing. Versus coming in, so.
Right, I mean, the the one thing I would say is we need to readjust our signage. Because our signage is a lot more prohibitory than we actually are. I mean, we're not turning away people that walk up to the front door. If you hit the doorbell, you know, you're getting in the building and you're doing what you need to do. It's just all we're doing is we're keeping it down to one access point. We're not opening, you know, we're not letting people in the back door. You know?
It's basically gonna probably be the same amount of traffic, but you're just, you're you're spacing people out more now. Is that accurate?
But inherently, we're also gonna have a problem, because how are we gonna make sure that people have signed in so we have contract tracing? Because that hallway is down below. You're still gonna have to have people ring the bell to come in. So whether we say the town hall's open or not, we don't have staff and we don't have. You know, I mean, do we tell them to go to a specific office to sign in before they go anywhere else? And how do we make sure that happens, right? So we have other logistical issues, because we have such a small staff there and a building that is is not conducive. It's so broken up, you know? So.
All right, well, something to talk about next month, and I know you have that meeting coming up, so.
Sure. Uh, to me, the bigger question is what what senior services do we provide? And when do we start letting groups in during the day to meet? And I, my personal feeling is that when the majority, when the town hall staff has had the opportunity. To get vaccinated, they may choose to get vaccinated, they may not. But when they've all had the ability to get vaccinated if they want, you know, then we have no problem. I have no problem opening the community room back up to senior services. And start providing, you know, going back to the Young at Heart program and things like that. And then the other valid question we need to consider is what do we do about seniors that are not vaccinated? Do we let them in? Do we exclude them? You know, what? Again, it 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 comes down to what your risk tolerance is and what your, how much liability you're willing to take on as a town.
I mean, I think the reality is this, e- even someone who is vaccinated can still spread the virus. The 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 person who is not vaccinated can't catch the virus at that point. You, a vaccinated person could also catch it, but their likelihood of having a severe reaction is is obviously much lower, so.
Right, so I think somebody who's. Well, you would hope that somebody who's has not gotten the shot understands that they're taking a risk. Good, you know, good things to think about and talk about. I think Dennis, did you have your hand up?
I I just wanted to say that uh, you know, not not much to say, but Wyndham, Wyndham is not open yet. Nor has Chaplain. Uh, Wyndham's, uh, we're getting a lot of, a lot of flack about Wyndham not opening. Uh, but I think the same, we have the same concerns that Eric has about, you know, people, right, going throughout the building without being.
The the state's not even at fifty percent vaccination yet, are they?
No.
No.
There, I think we were thirty something last I looked, so.
It's not, yeah, it's in the thirties.
So Eric, when you have your meeting on Thursday, if you could please give us an email to sit there and update us as to what. The Health District is thinking and what the other communities are thinking, it would help us make a decision at next meeting.
And ask them about, but you should do it with the seniors also.
Uh, Jeff, I just have one question. Um, I had a, I had to go to the motor vehicles for registration. Uh, a few weeks ago, and I made an appointment. And it actually went really well. I just don't know if we should maybe consider looking at an appointment scenario where people could actually make appointments to come in. And that way we keep the the population in the town hall at a reasonable level.
Well, Jeff, basically, that's what we've asked people to do.
Okay.
Um, and we put that out there all along, but the problem is, is that everybody just shows up anyway.
Yeah, I know, but if you go to.
They still wanna get served.
If you wanna go to DMV and register your car, if you don't have an appointment, you don't get it registered.
Right, I I know.
Point, point to Jeff Murray's issue and just, this is just more uh town info. Make your appointment and show up fifteen minutes late and you move to the front of the line. Do not show up early for a DMV appointment. You will continue to get pushed back as my, as I was dealt with.
Yeah, I mean, it might, I was in and out of there in ten minutes to register a boat. It was, it was really simple. It's just, it's just, it's just something to think about.
So if your appointment is at ten, show up at ten fifteen and you will go right to the front of the line.
And and you are correct in that what we found in a lot of the offices is if people call in. And they ask the the, you know, they ask the tax collector or they ask the assistant assessor and say. Tell them what I need. Usually they have that sitting there ready to go by the time the person's in. So it's beneficial to people to actually tell us they're gonna come in. It's just people don't wanna do that. People wanna be able to walk into the town hall, do what they gotta do, you know? And so it's just a question of level of service you wanna provide more than anything.
Yeah, I understand. Well, most of the municipal, you know, entities right now are doing that, you know, they're doing this, uh, appointment setup, so. It just might be something we wanna consider.
Okay, so we will address this again at our next meeting. Nine G is the Andover Covered Bridge Discussion. I know there's some questions about uh transference of that bridge to the state. And Eric, do we have any details as to whether that bridge is state property, town property, held by the town? Not held by the town, I know.
It is on the Towns Bridge List.
It is on the Towns Bridge List.
Right, yep.
And who were the entities that were at the bridge last Wednesday?
That was the State DOT, uh, approved bridge inspectors. That bridge is on a two-year bridge inspection cycle. And it's still in good shape, according to them.
Okay, so so maintenance of that bridge, are you trying to tell us that the town is responsible for maintenance on that bridge?
That's what the state thinks.
So can we get uh the DOT um area supervisor to come out and talk about that bridge?
What do you wanna know?
Why DOT?
Well, either DOT or DEP, I don't care who it is. I mean.
Both of them.
Adrian, that bridge, that bridge should not be our responsibility as a town. It's on the state rail trail.
Right.
And and any maintenance costs incurred on that, incurred by the town. Because if I remember the way that that bridge deal worked, is the town got the grant and had to fund it. And then it was supposed to be turned over to the state for maintenance.
That's what I recall also.
So if it hasn't been done all these years later, then let's try to get that done.
Wait, you're surprised that Connecticut didn't do something that they said they were gonna do? Really?
Well, I'm not surprised that Andover didn't do something that it should have done, so I now I'm saying, let's get it done. I mean, I'm hon, I'm honestly tired of Diane Griner bringing this up every six months and us failing to do something.
So we transfer it to Diane Griner?
Diane, Diane has done enough for this community. She just wants to see things get done correctly.
Name it after her. I think that's a fair option.
No, we're good.
Why don't we just put a toll up? Charge everybody a buck to cross it and put the money in the piggy bank for when it needs to get fixed.
Now you're talking.
Now you're talking.
See?
Pay for play. All right, so.
One more, we had one more concern about the gutters.
Uh-oh.
That was.
It has gutters?
Gutters, yes, it has gutters, and apparently they haven't been cleaned in ten years. So we wanna take on that responsibility of getting those gutters cleaned.
Do they need to be cleaned?
Is there an issue with them? Have they been inspected? Are they clogged? Are they not clogged?
Did you get any feedback from that, Eric, when they were up there looking at the bridge?
I did not get any specific feedback. I did not ask them what the the status of the gutters are. I just anecdotally, the chief engineer, chief inspector there said, yeah, it still looks like it's in pretty good shape. They didn't find anything that was a real material deficiency.
Is there any way we could get a drone inspection or somebody with a drone in town that could fly over and?
We don't have to work that hard. All you guys do is wait until Thursday midday when it's raining and go see if they're draining or not.
I was just gonna ask you that. Did anybody ever see it raining?
Yeah, just check it on Thursday. We got an inch of rain coming.
Okay.
Who's in charge of that, Eric?
I was gonna ask to, it's.
I'll tell you what, on Thursday, I will drive under the bridge and I will see what's up.
Peak rainstorm's supposed to be around seven PM.
Okay. Um, we now have nine H burning permits. So we did pass a burning permit fee of ten, I believe it was ten dollars, Eric?
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars, a whopping thirty dollars for a burning permit so that we could fund uh the new burning official in town.
Right, so. So my take on this is that, you know, what if Adrian wanted to burn every weekend? And, you know, he has fifty some odd acres and he wanted to burn every weekend. Uh, and how many, how how many dollars is that gonna be?
Well, it should be an awful lot, considering how much hec, negative health consequences that has on the rest of the universe. He should be paying an awful lot of money.
Given the acreage that I have, I don't think it's affecting anyone directly. I think it's Scott's point.
Is it?
Now, now if, now if I had two acres and I burnt once a year, I was thirty dollars and Adrian burnt thirty times. It's gonna cost him nine hundred dollars. Is does that, to to me, it just doesn't seem fair.
So that, is that permit for one burn on one pile?
Yeah.
It should be.
But it's one time. What happens if my pile's too big to burn in one shot?
Then you pay again.
Yeah, we need to change that.
Well, so are you saying you don't want the guy to inspect every time there's a burn? Are you saying you wanna have him come to your property once a year and give you, Adrian, a global burning permit? Is that what you're advocating for?
I think. Whoa, 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 slow down here a little bit. We didn't, we didn't, we're 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 talking about this right now. We're talking about.
I think it is fair for larger landowners, and I unfortunately, I I wasn't even thinking of this, but. You know, Scott's right. Technically, I fall into that category, so. And, you know, because my neighbor across the street happens to be the gentleman that brought it up. And they have over a hundred acres, and the problem you run into is. You do run into, I mean, currently, you know, I have a chipper that I have access to, so I chip a lot of stuff. But, you know, that may not always be the case. And so working through a pile, like when we first got here, we, you know, we did a lot more burning, so. But that's not always, that that's not always practical. I mean, and obviously it's not practical for my neighbor across the way, so. As if you're someone that's burning regularly and you have that much property. You know, obviously, the the official needs to come up, verify where your, where your prospective piles are or are going to be. You've got a a a designated burn area, you you have to check with, and we just had this conversation with with the burning official. Uh, the other day down at the park, the three of us were there, you know, we were working on the pump, and, you know, as he said. You know, he, they have to call into Talon and tell them when they're gonna start burning, right? To notify Talon dispatch, hey, we're gonna start burning, so that Talon knows if there's a fire, get called in, or someone calls in that they they know what's going on. But if someone is burning that often, obviously, they know what they're doing. And and it, but it would, it would also be up to the burning official to be able to, you know, if if he so chose, stop in and check on that person. You know, at least when they first get their permit to make sure they're doing as they're supposed to be doing. So I think you could do that, charge more for the initial permit, even if you say. Charge them three times that or charge them a hundred bucks for a one-year permit, and then they have to renew the following year, you know? So it's more manageable for them. I mean, we're a rural community, that, you know, that's.
Right, so why should anybody be doing any burning? Right? I don't wanna listen. I hate my neighbor burning.
Let's go through this aspect. If there is a change that someone would like to recommend for our next meeting. Let's put the change out there so we all have a chance to review it and try to figure out if it can be a workable solution for Eric and the limited staff that he has at the town hall. And the new burning official who has passed his course, if I remember correctly. That accurate? Okay.
Yes.
So Scott, Scott and Adrian, if you.
Jeff, I'm just, I'm just asking what everyone else thinks about this. Obviously, the landowner has a valid. Problem.
Well, I I'm, Scott, I'm not sitting there saying that his his request is not valid. I'm just saying, come up with a reasonable solution.
And and that's what the board, that's what I'm requesting of the board right now as we're talking about this. It is, does anybody have any other better ideas? Maybe some, you know, I always thought that every, I listened to everybody. better ideas? Maybe some, you know, I always thought that every, you listen to everybody at the end of the conversation, probably gonna get a better idea. So if everyone has their opinion, there's got, a better, a better solution will come out of it.
Scott, in the, in the past, the town solved it because we didn't collect any fee.
Yeah.
So for somebody that burned a lot, Eddie would just go out there a lot. But, you know, that chews up a lot of time. And so either you take a professional salaried staff, you know, and you make them go out there a lot, or you pay somebody um, to do it. Um, I'm not sure an appropriate solution is really telling a burning official that they can go out to a property and collect a fee one time. To me that and, and I'm not gonna tell you, I understand the legality. I'm gonna tell you from my perspective, I would rather do everything we possibly could to discourage burning rather than encourage it. So from my personal perspective, I see no reason to minimize the fee uh, or minimize the hassle, because the last thing we really want is people burning stuff. Because it irritates an awful lot of other people. And yes, there are some large landowners that can burn and maybe not smoke out their neighbors, maybe. Um, but, but it is a hassle to a lot of people.
We gotta come up with a solution that's gonna be the middle of the road for all these situations. I don't know that we'll come up with it tonight.
All right, what did I miss? My connection reset for some reason.
We, uh.
We're trying to determine what a workable solution is for the permit that we passed two mu- meetings ago of thirty dollars a burn. So Scott, really what I'm after is, I don't think we're going to resolve it at nine o'clock at night tonight.
Yeah.
And while I agree with you that, you know, it might be beneficial for larger landowners, I don't think it's really workable with the deal that we struck with Scott Yoman.
Oh, no, it doesn't sound like it now.
So, so we need to come up with something and let's put it on.
What, what, what in his deal prevents a larger fee? And then we just ask him to inspect, say, three times a year or four times a year?
Inspect the same person?
Yeah.
Three times a year?
Yeah, so I pay, I pay a hundred and twenty bucks and he comes out quarterly and inspects.
I don't know, it just leaves, that leaves things open for, I mean.
For what? For him to come out and inspect?
He's gonna walk, he's gonna walk your fifty acres and determine where you put your fire pits?
No, where, it's my job to put them in safe locations and bring them to him. Say, okay, this is where we've got this pile, this is where we've got this pile. And most landlords are gonna plan that stuff out ahead of time. We don't just randomly go out there and start piling stuff. We're gonna know when we start doing it, I'm gonna stick it here, I'm gonna stick it there, you know?
So where I don't have a problem with that, what I would ask you to do, and I would ask Scott to do, is get with Scott Yoman and find something that's workable, because we did sit there and tell the burning official to get his course and that we would pay him based upon the permitted fees. So I, I have no problem if you come up with something that's workable, that doesn't burden the town staff or burden, you know, if Scott agrees to it, then I can, I'll agree to it.
And what do you, what do you think as far as a minimum acreage, Scott? We should have a minimum acreage on that, though.
Five hundred?
How much?
Five hundred.
Five hundred, yeah.
Eric is good, so.
Eric, we know how you feel.
Yeah.
Well, Paula, Paula, you have twenty-five, right? Ish? Somewhere there? More or less. Do you guys do much burning?
No.
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 Paula, Paula cares about the environment and her neighbors.
I do, and we, you know, we, we take care of our, no.
I'd say a minimum of, I would say a minimum of twenty-five would be appropriate.
Can I just ask, what are you really, I mean, like between myself and my father, there's thirty-five acres there. What are you burning? What are you, I mean, are you really, I don't know, manicuring the woods? I've never burned anything in my backyard. I've, I have no need for it. I don't.
I, I don't, personally, Eric, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary for me to explain what I'm doing to maintain, or, or anyone else, really, for that matter. I mean, you're, you're, you know, you built a different house than I did, right? It, it's not up to me to say, well, why did, why did you build that house, or why do you maintain it a certain way? For myself, you know, the state of Connecticut no longer does prescribe burns like they used to. And so there is a lot of underbrush issues that if you don't address. We, we used to cut them down and leave them in place. When we had our forestry inspection, we were advised that that wasn't a great idea, that we should remove some of that underbrush. Um, that it would help our trees be healthier, so that I can keep my, my trees that are in forestry, you know, doing well. Um, and so we, we pull those out and compile them. Um, again, I currently am not doing a lot of burning cuz I don't need to. I have access to other, other methods to do it. But like, for me to bring down the transfer station, first of all, it'd bury you guys. And second of all, it would take so much amount of time and labor, it's not even funny. So we try to handle them on site, but um, when we first got to the property, we were doing burning. We're currently not, you know? But ag- again, I may, I may need to go back to that, or someone else may need to. Obviously, you know, that's what Yolo, uh, Anson's doing now, so. Um, I'm sure he's not the only one, no?
Okay, so, so again, S- Scott and Adrian and Paula, since you are the three members of this board that actually have acreage that might come over the threshold, come up with a program and let's sit there and get the burning official on board and then we can all vote at it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to Scott to see what he thinks would be appropriate, really.
Absolutely. Alright.
Is that alright? Is that alright, Mr. Prasan? You good with that?
Yeah, we had, we had a lively discussion here. That's just, that's what I wanted.
But it was, it was a, it was a good discussion.
And I would have felt negligent if I didn't do that for Mr. Anson.
So let's, let, we'll get a group text together, figure out a time that we can talk to, um, Scott Yoman and go from there.
Okay, so we're moving on to item ten, approval of minute meetings, uh, approval of the Monday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-one regular minute meetings and approval of the Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one special minute, special meeting minutes. Someone wanna make a motion to approve those?
I'll motion to approve both of those meetings that Jeff just described.
I'll second.
Right. Further discussion? Anybody need to make any changes? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Um, eleven, the finance department report, uh, the revenue summary that was included, the town budget summary, the town aid road update and town cash report and over expenditure report. Um, anybody wanna discuss any of those individual items?
Uh, I mean, Eric as a whole, the one thing I heard, uh, we were at the transfer station over the weekend doing some stuff for, for the upcoming elections. And the one question I got repeatedly from town residents over and over and over again is, what are we doing with the trees? So I know there was some discussion last week on the Board of Finance about, um, trees, but how much do we have that we can pull from every nook and cranny of this year's budget and throw towards trees? Because I will also add that, um, I know I just did some work with Distinctive this week and he was saying that once July one hits, the state is gonna bury him once their new budget cycle runs, so. We need to get as much done as we can before July one or, you know?
That's what we had the last budget meeting, at the last finance meeting, I asked for another, uh, I th- I think I asked for fifty thousand dollars more in the tree budget.
So what the fo- Board of Finance approved was?
Mr. Reinstated twenty-five thousand dollars that we took, took out of it.
Right, so.
I want, I wanted more cuz after we had those meetings here, I, I figured that that twenty-five thousand dollars was gonna go fast on two hundred yards of road.
So what the Board of Finance agreed to was to budget in next year's budget fifty thousand dollars for tree work. And that we transfer twenty-five thousand dollars this year from the money that was planned to be spent on the software um, that the school ended up paying for. And put that money immediately as soon as we could get a motion together. Um, so we could start doing tree work. We have lined up Distinctive and we have started seriously talking about doing the Giravati Road Giravati Lane Triangle cuz we know we've had some significant problems there and we have some just huge trees that need to be dealt with. Those trees have been identified, those trees have had the official notices put on them, so residents are aware. And we got an initial bid from Distinctive, but Board of Finance hasn't transferred the money yet. So we're gonna try to do as much as we can right now with what we have in that budget. If they, if we can transfer the other twenty-five thousand, we'll continue to do work this spring uh, prior to the new budget year.
But what do we, so we have twenty-five K that you've identified from where?
So it was money that in the last year's budget, we allocated, we budgeted for the software transition.
We also have what, fifty in contingency?
Theoretically, yeah.
I mean, can we talk about taking another, take twenty-five out of that, ask the Board of Finance to consider another twenty-five out of contingency right now?
I, I, I mean, honestly, I don't have enough faith that we're gonna have, you know, we've cut the budget enough that I do not have the confidence that we are going to have excess in this year's budget. It is possible we can take money from contingency, but I can't tell you that for a fact. Last year at this point, I would be happy to tell you, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we could reallocate. And I was convinced of that, you know, and we did. This year, I'm not convinced of that. I would not be, personally, I would not be, could, because the Board of Selectmen has already asked me to move up to twenty thousand dollars from the one little pot of money I knew I could spend, which was the COVID relief money. And then the Board of Finance has indicated that they're gonna take up the slack in the, uh, the money for the software. So I don't have any other real pools of money I can pull from, Adrian.
Well, except that you've got at least fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars in payroll that you haven't been spending, whether it's building department or Tim's replacement by the time you get somebody in line.
Well, first of all, we don't have any because we have completely spent out the budget we had for paying off employees for their accumulated sick time. And we're going to have a fairly good payout in the next day for Tim Higley. So that's gonna chew up any difference in Tim's position. And we're already well over on overtime overall for Public Works. And we ended up hiring a supervisor that makes an awful lot more money per year than Eddie. So there isn't that slack. Um, we don't have, that's what I'm saying, we don't, we're not sitting on a big excess pool, at least as far as I can tell.
Well, I, I guess my point is that from the payroll side, you've, you've got enough sitting there cuz you've also have the building department. That person has been out for how many weeks now? Gone?
Three weeks.
Right, so by the time you hire somebody or get somebody in there to perform coverage, we'll have, you know, that, if it's a thousand a week, that's, you know, expense-wise, that's four grand.
Okay, I mean, you seem to be convinced we have a lot more money than I'm willing to say we have. If you decide, if you as a board.
When will you feel comfortable being able to tell us how much money you have excess to start spending?
Mid-June?
It's too late, you know that.
Eric, I thought we were in, I thought the new, um, the new treasurer or the new finance department lead, I thought you were going to get together with her and review the current status of all the accounts. And can you give us, I mean, I know the, the information we're sitting and looking here as an April seventh printing date. Can you get to looking at that and determine what you think might be available?
I am trying to program time with her to sit down and start figuring that out. Cuz I wanna start making transfers, you know, and spending the excess money. But what I'm saying, I'm not confident that I know what we have at this point. And you're asking me for a date.
I listen, understood, understood, but what I think is being asked by the other board members is that we prioritize the trees and, and utilizing money in that sec- in that segment. So if you can, it would be greatly appreciated if you could sit there and do that for our benefit, because as Scott has said and as Adrian is saying, you know, I think, uh, Scott's number was he could use probably fifty thousand dollars on two hundred yards of road in Giravati. So.
And, and listen, not to drive this point home any further, but I will tell you that one of my neighbors unfortunately was injured trying to take down a tree on their property, one of these ash trees. And severely injured, you know, six, six broken ribs, three broken vertebrae. These things are dangerous, they're unwieldy, they snap in storms constantly. We know this, you know this, Eric, I know you gotta deal with it. I'm not, I'm not telling you something you don't. I'm simply saying that the, we always say, what's the thing we hear the most from residents, right? Well, this, as of right now, I'm hearing trees, 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 trees. So I'm only, I'm only pushing you because they're pushing us. And, you know, I know we have a very competent assistant in that finance office. And I, I haven't met the new person yet, but I'm hearing she's, she's amazing as well. So let's put them on this and figure out what we've got by, say, you know, May fifteenth, if, 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 you know, four weeks from now, we can come up with a number to say, hey, we think you could safely pull this. And then we tie that up in contract so we can get those guys working, you know?
And, and Adrian, just so, you know, I don't think anyone needs to tell you how close that you've gotten to our town budget and to where we're at, so.
Right.
Let's, let's get it, let's get our numbers in line, Eric, and sit there and see if there's any available money, because this town, as I was talking to Eric this morning, the town side of this budget is not exactly inflated.
Oh.
Right? So let's, let's see what we can do, Eric. If that is a priority, it would be beneficial if we could sit there and, and get additional trees down as quickly as possible. Uh, Eric, I do have one question for you on the revenue side.
Sure.
The ECS money, the educational cost sharing money?
Yeah.
The status of that, and have we got any information from the state?
Uh, in terms of this year's budget or in terms of next year's budget?
No, this year's collection, the receipt of those funds.
I think there's still one payment remaining, if I, if I remember right. I think we've collected about one point five million. And we got somewhere around five hundred thousand to go. Am I not?
It doesn't, that doesn't appear to be how I'm reading it, but maybe I'm reading it incorrectly, so.
I will ask that.
Reading this report correctly, we've only received twenty-five percent of that money?
Oh, you're right. Actually, I had it in my notes that we'd received seventy-five percent, not twenty-five percent. I'll reach out.
Because that concerns me. It concerns me for multiple reasons. One, did the state not send us our allotment? Or two, did we misapply our allotment and we need to sit there and get that money applied correctly?
Yeah, my suspicion is we probably haven't done the jour- journal entries cuz I know we're quite a bit behind in that.
Okay. Alright.
I will ask that question and get back to you.
Any other questions on the financial department reports, finance department reports? Okay. Um, twelve, the budget appropriation transfers over, uh, expenditure requests. Do you have any?
None at this time.
Yep. Tax collector's report. There was three hundred thousand dollars collected, I believe, in the last cycle. Uh, the total was three hundred ten thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars in February deposits. We still have remaining to collect from this last tax year. The total of two million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-four cents. With, well, three hundred thousand dollars of receivables from other tax years. Okay. Anybody have any other questions or issues on the tax collector reports? Okay. The assessors report. The assessors report, item fourteen, and revaluation services. Eric, any updates that you need to give us?
Uh, no, the memo has gone around to most residents asking them to call in and schedule their interior inspection, or call them and tell them they're unwilling to do it. Um, there's no penalty for not allowing internal inspections, but we are kind of required by law to ask. Um, but we know a significant fraction, probably the majority of residents, will refuse us, uh, interior inspections.
And then, uh, for our next meeting, can you sit there and provide us with, uh, a report related to the Board of Assessment Appeals? And the, uh, reductions in taxes that they've provided? Uh, put that in a, uh, form, you know, pull it off the website, or do whatever you need to do, and put it into our meeting package, so that we can sit there and see what reductions have been made.
I can do that.
Okay. Um, fire department report, I did not, I might have seen something, but.
It did not make the packet, Ron handed in late. I got it on Saturday, so it's not in the packet. Nothing really unusual in the fire department report.
Okay. Burning official, was there anything related to that? I didn't think I saw anything there.
Yeah, there's, in your packet, there's a, a, just a list of what, uh, burning permits that he has issued so far. He's issued three to three town residents.
Okay. Okay, are there any of the other departmental reports that anyone wants to address? Uh, I will tell you Jay Toddle gave us a detailed information related to what is going on at Public Works. It was interesting reading. Anybody else have any other issues related to any of the other departments? No, okay. Uh, Eric, any correspondence that we need to be aware of?
Nope, nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay, and, uh, we're going, I'm going to allow public speak before we move into executive session. So Amanda, if you wouldn't mind, let's, uh, go through item seventeen.
Okay, here we go. First up, Diane Granier.
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Georgeette Conrad?
Um, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all the work they do. I know it's not an easy thing to do. Um, I wanted to say that during this last year, I've had to go into the town office building a number of times. I've called and made an appointment, and it has worked out beautifully. Um, I do want to speak out to say that we need to get the seniors to allow them to get together again, because it's very lonely. I'm not lonely, because I have a spouse, but some of them don't. And they need to connect with each other, so whatever can be done to get them together again in the community room for movies or the bingo, um, would be really appreciated, because a lot of them need to make that connection. And last, um, but not least, I think Shannon, Shannon, um, Lowden ought to wash her mouth out with soap.
Thank you, okay. Um, next we have Kathy Pelosi and Mike Pelosi.
I'm good, thank you, Mike.
Me too, I'm good.
Alright, thank you. Dennis O'Brien, would you like to participate?
Well, I'm very pleased to be, have an opportunity to write up a, uh, driveway permit ordinance, I guess. You also may, I don't know if you need a burning ordinance. I don't know if you have one or not. I couldn't access the ordinances on my phone. But you may need an ordinance for that as well, and a number of other things, depending on whether you have one now, if you're gonna be charging fees, like, you really kinda need to have an ordinance. So, I'll look at that. That's all I have, I'm just pleased that the, um, that the, uh, Board of Selectmen approved the, uh, the notice of the, uh, annual town meeting. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you Dennis.
Thanks Dennis. Shannon Lowden.
The only thing that I want to say is that I did not ask that my words from last Wednesday be bleeped out of the meeting, out of any ill intent whatsoever towards Selectman Murray. The sole intent was for the legal integrity of the town, and that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thanks Shannon. Linda Fish.
All set.
Alright, thank you. Kurt Dowling. Kurt Dowling, would you like to participate in public speak? Maybe we'll come back to him, go on to Diane Chikat.
Alright, I am good, nothing here.
Thank you. Lucy Wilson.
All set, thank you.
Thanks Lucy. Dan Foran.
I'm all set, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Boris. Okay, next up we have Catherine McGoldy Lewis.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me Amanda?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, um, first I'd like to say, I really, actually had thought about doing this, and then wasn't going to do it at all, quite honestly, but then after listening to the public speak at the beginning of the meeting, I ended up actually typing something up, and I would like to have this statement added to public record, please Amanda, I will send you a copy. And what I wanted to say is this, that I understand the feelings created by Shannon's outburst, and I do believe that those feelings are justified. However, I want to go on record as saying that what Shannon did was a mistake. Just that, a mistake. She did what many people do every day, get angry and swear. The only difference was that she didn't realize she had an open mic, and unfortunately she was hurt. But it was very difficult for me to listen to some of the members of the Board of Selectmen instruct us on proper behavior and speak of hypocrisy. Last summer, I received a phone call from Adrian Mandeville screaming at me, swearing at me, and ending up telling me that I would never get another effing thing from the Board of Selectmen. I alerted the first selectman and another BOS member of this event. Absolutely nothing was done. I was told not to take it personally, that's just Adrian. This incident to me is far worse than being caught swearing when you think no one is listening. This was not a mistake. This was a conscious, deliberate phone call. This was an elected official of the town, an elected member of the Board of Selectmen charged with leading our town, calling a resident, screaming so loud I had to lower my volume, swearing, saying F this, F that, and as I said, ending up threatening that I will never receive another effing thing from the Board of, Board of Selectmen. The big difference is that this was a private phone call, so fortunately for Adrian, the only people who heard them was me and my dog. But no member of the Board of Selectmen should ever be allowed to conduct themselves so unprofessionally. No board member should feel that they have the right to call a resident and treat them in a hostile, intimidating manner. This board is actually in need of some introspection, and I think that management skills training would be a very good idea. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't gonna say anything in public speak, but since you've called my name now, I will reply. I swore at you after you swore at me, and it was a.
That is a lie Adrian.
It was a personal conversation, not a public one, because it had nothing to do with this board or any other board.
That's a lie Adrian, and you know it.
I appreciate the, uh, I don't appreciate any of this.
Yeah, can we just have a point of order?
Let's, let's move on. I, I mean, it's public speak. Catherine, thank you very much for your, 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 your information and your, your public outreach, I appreciate it. Adrian? Not now. Let's go.
Hey, if someone calls me out at a meeting. You lies about it.
I understand the issue, I do, and I'm asking.
No, you don't, but she, she.
I'm asking you to refrain at this point in time.
Okay, next up we have Joanne Hubbert.
I'll try again. I was just gonna make a blanket statement that anyone holding a public office should hold themselves to a irresectable and respectful manner at all times. Um, I do think it's not good to dredge up the past though, when we're talking about a specific incident, because I'm sure many people, and this just happened. I think many people have stories that they could dredge up. I think it's important to just stick to the issues at hand. Um, and then just one more thing, I also hope that having an opinion different than a board member is not received as an attack. Um, I often state opinions that are different than what people think, and it's just my opinion, just trying to help. Um, it's not for, to attack anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne Hutchinson.
Hi, um, no, thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Latuska?
All set, thank you.
Thanks. Carol Lee?
All set Amanda, thank you.
Thanks Carol. Next up, Kelly Hagerty.
Um, we're all set, thank you.
Thanks Kelly. Alright, did we miss anyone? Would anyone else like to participate from the board?
Amanda, could I just say something real quick?
Oh, go ahead Dan.
I just want to end this on a positive note. Jeff, Jeff, Adrian, we've all had our differences, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future and working together, so, thank you.
Thanks Dan.
Yeah, I just want to comment, thank you Dan for reaching out. I think we're gonna have a, a positive relationship working forward.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, we need to make a motion to go into executive session. Everybody, for the community, we appreciate, uh, your attendance, and thank you for your input. Uh, we take everybody seriously, and, uh, look forward to keeping working with you. Okay. So, are we inviting anyone into our executive session? I would assume we invite our attorney and and our, uh, town administrator? Anything else we need to do? Okay, so I make a motion that we move into executive session at nine twenty-four PM, four twelve, to go into executive session to discuss upcoming, uh, union negotiations.
I'll second that.
Okay, with inviting the town attorney and the town administrator in.